Get overhead with this hooded figure with flaming red demonic eyes. That was my nightmare every single night and I was in a bath of sweat every night. I was rolling around on the floor, putting myself out. And I had the opportunity to go and meet the man who blew up the Galahad pilot by the name of Carlos Cajon. I, I, I had no idea what sort of man this, this man would be, but I needed to meet him. It didn't sit well with some people and, and I'm sorry for that. I, I had no intention of upsetting people, but I had to save myself. I had to do something to help me and meeting my nemesis, meeting my nightmares and finding out that he is just a really nice guy who's a family man, just like I am now. Um, was, was crucial for my own sanity. I needed to save my mental health and I've become a much stronger, healthier person because of meeting Carlos.
Simon's perspective on the islands also changed.
Years later, when I went back, I've looked at the islands totally differently. There's lots of drifting fields of white grass, beaches covered in elephant seals, penguins, dolphins swimming in the bays, different colored dolphins, black and white, beautiful. But you know, it's a place of great sadness because it's been fought over twice. The islanders will always remember nineteen eighty-two because it was their liberation. It was their freedom. It was their moment to have their own self-determination. My feelings about war, I hate it. I hate the thought of war, but somebody has to be prepared to go and fight for peace. When I sit in my garden at home and what I reflect upon is just how fortunate I am. But after forty years, I look back and I think I've missed my friends for forty years. I remember them every day. I don't need November the eleventh, forty-eight men on board my ship who'd love to have my issues in life. And they'd love to be sitting there with me. I remember them because they were important in my life.
That was Simon Weston, CBE, interviewed by producer Alan Hamilton. This was a Moon Road production for the BBC World Service.
This is the BBC World Service looking at the life of one of ancient Rome's most notorious emperors.
Anyone who threatened Nero's power was brutally dealt with, even his mother.
She really has to go.
History paints him as a murdering tyrant, but was there more to him?
We never know how much of it we can really believe.
Emperor Nero, bad boy of ancient Rome at bbcworldservice.com/Forum. And in thirty minutes, it's discovery.
Today we are talking about teenagers and so we are going to be investigating the strange goings on in the brains and bodies of.
Thank you, everyone. Good morning, everyone. This is Mark Flo, Chair of the Select Board.
I don't think we're live yet.
Recording just started. Let me start again. This is Mark Flo, Chair of the Select Board. I like to call this board the meeting to order on very early Tuesday morning, May third, two thousand twenty-two. Joined by Vice Chair Adam Dash. Good morning, Adam.
Morning, Mark.
And member Roy Epstein.
Good morning, everybody.
And Town Administrator Patrice Garben.
Morning.
And Assistant Town Administrator Glenn Clancy, who I think spoke the longest and most last night on Article Seven. Nice job on that, Glenn. Thank you.
Well, apparently it got me a promotion this morning, Mark, which I'm not sure I should thank you or not.
Oh, what was the promotion?
Good morning, everyone. You introduced me as the Assistant Town Administrator.
Oh, acting, acting, excuse me. I apologize. I haven't had my first sip of, sip of coffee yet. Let me just correct myself. Acting Assistant Town Administrator.
Thank you.
Okay, the only business that we have this morning is, um, do we still have an announcement? Because it's posted as a, there's a community announcement, Patrice, but I'll, I'll make the announcement anyway. We made it last night on Thursday, May nineteenth at seven P M. We will have a fuel tank public forum. I think we've been advertising that for quite some time. And we, we're continuing our business of voting on the, um, taking positions on the Warner Articles. And I believe the only two that we had left is Article Three and Article Twelve. Is that correct?
That is correct, and Three has three amendments.
Three has three amendments and so should we take them in order of the amendments?
I think we should because that's how we'll take it up a town meeting. We go through the amendments first.
Yeah, whatever order Mike laid out is fine.
Okay, I don't recall how he laid it out.
Maga, Weiss, he had Epstein, but now there's Schreiber and then the overall document.
Okay, so we have, um, the Maga amendment, we have the Weiss amendment and, um, Roy, you withdrawing your amendment? And we have the Schreiber amendment. So why don't we take up the Maga amendment first?
Yeah, I can just tell you just for background, that the Long Term Capital Planning Committee voted, uh, unfavorable action unanimously on the Maga amendment, um, as did, I believe, Capital Budget Committee, for what it's worth. And I can explain what went on during the conversation if that would help. Um, I mean, there was a lot, yeah.
Please, yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry.
There was a lot of confusion about, um, the actual, um, what the meaning was. I, I can tell everyone appreciates, you know, Bob Maga's attempts on this in, in Article Twelve. And I know what he's trying to do, I appreciate it. However, when it said that the committee will endeavor to use generally accepted financial analysis tools and models in evaluation comparison of capital projects, different people of different backgrounds on long-term capital planning took that to mean different things. Like we would have to buy some Oracle software, they owe a million dollars to do generally accepted financial analysis because that's the generally accepted tool. Or some other people thought it was something less. And the overall feeling was, and then there was a whole separate feeling, which I shared, which is this really isn't the place in the article for things like this. So the article sets up this new committee, it's sort of the bones and structure. And then the committee comes up with its rules, regulations and procedures, and we shouldn't be ordering them in upfront, you know, what those should be. Aside from the fact that it's vague and different people reading it all had different conclusions as to what it meant. And it seems to muddy up what took, you know, over a year to draft. And I get what he's trying to do. I appreciate it and I appreciate he's changed the language over time, but it's still just the general concept of it I have a problem with.
Oh, Mark, I, I, I think I agree with everything Adam said. I had some further concerns. One is that, um, the, these terms actually not only are, uh, do, do people interpret the language in different ways? Uh, what that really goes to is that when, for a particular problem, there could be many, many different analyses. One, in fact, there's always many, many analyses one could do. And, uh, ultimately you're relying on the judgment of the committee to do whatever analysis it thinks, it thinks is appropriate in a given situation. And it reaches a conclusion. This amendment, on the one hand, eh, in its final form, either seems redundant because the original language of the bylaw talked about taking life cycle costs into consideration. The amendment then says three or four times, look at life cycle costs. Well, the bylaw already said you would look at life cycle costs, so it fundamentally doesn't really add anything. But then, secondly, by giving this kind of laundry list of things the committee should do as a matter of a bylaw, it's potentially setting up a situation where the committee reaches some conclusion, issues a report, and then it's open to challenge that somehow this report reflecting the collective wisdom of the committee doesn't satisfy the bylaw, which seems like, you know, you, you should never be there. The, the whole point of the committee is to interpret the bylaw in its best judgment and be done with it. So I, I just don't see that the amendment is at all either substantively useful or, or constructive in its application. So I'm against the two.
I would note also that the bylaw already says ask the committee to set up procedures. So they're, they're already told to do it. This is just starting to tell them what those have to be, which just seems like a micromanagement thing. I don't know, Roy, if you're looking, also you're talking about some items. This is Bob Maga's amendment, Second Amendment. He changed it from the first one down to one sentence. So the stuff about life cycle came out.
Yeah, what is it, one sentence?
One sentence is the, the committee will endeavor to utilize generally accepted financial analysis tools and models in its evaluation and comparison of capital.
Oh, well, now I apologize because maybe I'm not keeping up with all the amendments, but, but it doesn't matter because there is no such thing as a generally accepted tool. There just isn't.
No, and, and the committee, everyone on the committee had a different, a different thought as to what that was. I do see what you're seeing, there's, there's, um, italicized language below. It says among the analyses the committee performs as amendment urges the committee to use financial analysis tools to evaluate life cycle costs. I assume that's part of this, although being in italics, I'm not sure maybe whether that was just a comment that, like a wording that was this sort of explanatory or whether that's actually part of the amendment, it's not clear.
Well, I, I can speculate, uh, what motivated this amendment, but it doesn't matter. The, the, the way it's written, it is not helpful for the work of the committee in the future and it's not going to lead to any better, uh, work by the committee in the future. I think it's just going to open up the potential for endless sort of post-committee litigation by unhappy members of the public.
And we talked about that at the Long Term Capital Planning Committee. Yeah, that's exactly one of the other arguments, so.
I think that's right, gentlemen. I agree with you. I've talked to Bob briefly about this and look, I, we, I think we would say we appreciate the intent, if you will, uh, that we do want, uh, on particularly major long-term capital projects, you know, financial analysis performed. But leave that up to the committee to decide what that, how, how to define that. And secondly, um, I think anyone that presents any department has Town Administrator, uh, you know, the school administration that presents something to the, to this new committee that presumably will be formed tomorrow evening, that, that analysis will be in place anyway. And, and so, um, appreciate the spirit and intent of it. I don't think it's needed, necessary. So, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm recommending unfavorable action as well, so.
I would move unfavorable action on the Maga amendment to Article Three.
Second.
All in favor, all in favor?
Aye. Hi. Adam Dash, aye, I'm sorry.
Yeah, for a minute there, I thought we were live, Adam, which I hope we didn't too at some point. But yeah, I know, because you corrected me at one point, I would say, Mark Flo, I, we were sitting there live, you said, we don't need to do that anymore. Uh, Mark Flo, I, so it's unanimously recommending unfavorable action. Okay, let's take up, um, um, what, what would be next?
Jack Weiss.
Jack Weiss, Jack Weiss is, and he's just had one change, right?
Let me tell you about the, yeah, Long Term Capital Planning Committee and Capital Budget both voted unanimously in favor of this one. Um, this is actually a good catch because what he's trying to do here is saying that, um, for items that are, uh, that not every item, like, you know, software, a vehicle, needs to be set over a thirty-year period because they're not going to last thirty years. So what he did is he said only anticipated major capital improvements need over a thirty-year plan, um, to be analyzed. And that was actually the intent, but it didn't really say that and it didn't make any sense. If you're buying software that's going to last five years to analyze its value over thirty years. So this was actually a good catch.
Okay, so presumably we, we support this and recommend favorable action. So do I have a motion to that extent?
I move favorable action on the Weiss amendment to Article Three.
Second.
All in favor?
Adam Dash, aye.
Roy Epstein, aye.
Mark Flo, aye. And I'm scrambling to find Ellen Schreiber's amendment. Adam, you have it in front of you or someone have it in front of you? I know what it says.
I don't know that it got sent around, but I've seen it because I think it came from Ellen Cushman at some point. Maybe yesterday, but the, the basics of it, it was fairly, it was fairly straightforward. I would say that the, that the Long Term Capital Planning Committee obviously couldn't vote on it because it hadn't existed yet. But when Roy put his in, they, we were in support of a, of something like Roy's if it was worded in the way that Ellen Schreiber worded it. And then she worded it the way that we were in favor of it. So she basically, we were fine with it if it became coming like, what it basically did is it harmonized Article Three with the, um, our operational rules on the select board and saying that the member, the select board seat on the new committee is the vice chair or the vice chair's designate if the vice chair can't make it, which is what we do anyway, so.
Which, which it didn't have before, it just had vice chair, didn't have and, and the vice chair's designate.
Right, that's, that's the only real change is the designate, which is a, you know, fair point, um, so.
Roy, you had an amendment, we drew it, you may want to just speak to this briefly in terms of your thoughts, if you want to.
Um, no, I'm. My concern was, um, mainly that there's no other bylaw where a position is locked into a single individual with no alternative. So I, I view this as a housekeeping issue mostly.
No, I agree. And this, and I think, yeah, and I think everyone seemed, this just carries out the intent better, it's fine.
Okay, yeah, and I think that when we talked to Chris Doyle, when she presented this bylaw change, Article Three, um, I thought that the spirit of our discussion or intent was, look, you know, with, there's three members of the board, uh, and that, you know, we believe it's important to divide up responsibilities, particularly on the two, at least this is my point of view, at least particularly on the two largest financial committees in town, at least the more impactful, which is Warrant Committee and Capital Budget Committee and soon to be Long Term Capital Planning Committee. And, uh, you know, we collaborate and share sort of what takes on, takes place in those meetings. And that's why they changed it to vice chair. But I think the ad, the ad by Ellen Schreiber in her amendment makes abundant sense. So I don't think we, we are in support of that. So do I have a motion to recommend favorable action?
No, Mark, let me just.
Yeah, go ahead.
Make one more observation. So I think the amendment is fine. I do have a suggestion to tweak the operating role, but I'm going to wait until our meeting in June to see what you all think of it because.
Okay, I can't wait.
It's, um, it, no, it's, it's really a detail and it preserves the existing rotation. But there's, um, there's just a tweak, I think, that would make life easier for everybody, so.
There are some things I wanted to touch on that. And for instance, it still says board of selectmen, it still says that we serve on the light board. So there are some things that need to be tweaked, I just.
On the procedural rules?
Yeah, because we, things have keep changing and we've never updated the rules. I just didn't want to open the kind of room, so.
But I think we should do that in, in June, Mark, if we can to sync up.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm happy, I'm happy, our agenda is getting full again, but, uh.
Wait till after the town meeting.
Yeah, no, one of the things we need to think about, you know, digress for a moment here is that, you know, we never really have these committees. And I know that liaisons report out, but perhaps at some point we should have these committees, ask them to come in front of us, even though Warrant Committee and this committee doesn't really report to the select board, we're not the appointing authority per se. Um, just report out in terms of the things they're working on. I think might be just a way to sort of advertise that, to meet with us and also to meet with the residents in the community.
Well, Mark, uh, I'm not sure we took a vote, actually. Did we vote on the amendment?
No. I move favorable action on the Schreiber amendment to Article Three.
Second.
All in favor?
Adam Dash, aye.
Roy Epstein, aye.
Mark Flo, aye.
Mark, so let me just return to the point you were making. It, I, I think it is critical that there be, uh, at least periodic updating directly from the committee because the liaison role is, I don't think is terribly effective. I, I think it's better if, whatever the frequency is, if the chair or designate of the chair of the really consequential committees just comes before the select board once in a while. So that, that certainly is easy with the, with the committees appointed by the select board. But we also have planning board, we have warrant committee, we have building committees, uh, that, that all in the end can influence the town in a big way and be responsible for an awful lot of money. And even if we don't, if they, even if they don't report to us per se, I think residents have an expectation that the select board knows what's going on, sometimes in more detail than we really do.
I'm, I'm in agreement, absolutely in agreement. And in fact, um, I think at one point I was talking to Steve Pinkerton, who's currently the Chair of the Planning Board and said, Steve, I think it makes abundant sense at times to, for you, for the planning board to, we are the appointing authority of the planning board, um, to report out in terms of major issues you're working on. So I agree, boy, we can, we can schedule those types of meetings.
And we've done them over the years. I'm going to, as Chair, the first time, we used to have every month, I had a different committee come and meet with us. It just takes up time and meetings, which is fine, but, um.
We've been so busy, Adam, we have so many things going on, but I, I agree with Roy and you that we need to, um, have a cadence to it and have them, you know, come in front of us, you know, and ask them to, um, to just report out on, on the work that they're doing, perhaps.
Absolutely, be happy to do that.
In the fall, so. Okay, the only other article we have is Twelve, um, which is in an evolution from a more substantive binding amendment to now a non-binding resolution. I think, you know, Bob Maga, in discussions with any number of folks, has decided to make it a non-binding resolution. And I have to tell you, I'm a little bit torn because I, I agree with the, the intent of this and find myself leaning towards wanting to just support it just as a statement. But, you know, ladies and gentlemen, would like to hear what your thoughts are.
Yeah, so Mark, I would propose a slight difference in approach. I, I think everybody is completely committed to transparency and carrying out the, the letter and the spirit of the open meeting law as best we can. Uh, and it's clear from the Attorney General guidance that while the public does not have an automatic right to address a public body, the, 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 the public body should make every effort to receive public comment when, particularly when time permits. But I, I think one thing that's going on perhaps is that, and, and the fact that his resolution now is aimed at just at appointed committees and not elected bodies. I, I think it would be useful when we appoint committee members or, or maybe annually to have some kind of statement a, as the appointing authority that we direct to the committee to say, this is what we would like to see. I think it's full, completely within our scope as an appointing authority. And, and actually perhaps even make it a binding part of the charge of the committee. I, I just don't see that non-binding resolutions actually get us anywhere. But, but I think as the appointing authority that with ultimate control over these committees, we actually could address, uh, any deficiencies that arise, which, you know, in the end, a committee largely reflects, the, the, the operating style of committee largely reflects its chair. And if there's dissatisfaction generally with what the chair is doing, I think we could be in a position to say something.
I mean, I would say, I mean, I, I kind of get tired of the transparency buzzword being thrown around because this is not about transparency. We're completely, every committee is completely transparent, especially during COVID because we're all being broadcast. I mean, you can see what we're doing. If you can hear my words, this is transparency, you see it. Uh, requiring committees to talk, have people talk is not transparency, that's a different thing. That's like allowing public comment, which people have never been shy about. But I would say that most committees, if you go, they seem to have a public comment, period. And committees, we're, we're, let me finish, refuse to let people talk. Sometimes boards need time to talk amongst themselves and we've had those meetings. Sometimes it's, um, not appropriate when it's staff-related issues to have the public wing. And sometimes it's, there are public forums like the Rec Commission had on the tennis courts, and then the Rec Commission wanted a meeting to discuss and vote and not have yet more comment because there was, they'd already heard the comment. And I, every meeting doesn't have to have public comment because public comment happens at some point during the process. So I, and the open meeting law covers this. Well, and I get concerned that this ends up with people with a particular viewpoint filibustering a meeting and then delegitimizing a vote by saying, you know, you didn't let me talk for the umpteenth time. And it's like, well, I don't know, it's tough to bind the chair's hands on and running a meeting. You know how, we all know how it is, it's tough. Sometimes you have to bob and weave during the meeting.
Well, Mark, let me, I, I would add, I actually served on one committee where the chair did not allow public comment at all, at any time. And then I, I, um, which technically is, you know, within the chair's rights and under open meeting law, but it's not a policy we would like. And then I actually spoke to Bob about this and he had a particular axe to grind, if I can put it that way, which was, in his view, committees, uh, discussing amongst themselves and then voting, and then only after the vote, uh, taking public comment, which he found kind of empty. Uh, and I agree that that would be empty. I'm just not sure that actually ever happens, but that that was what he told me.
I'd also say, you know how it is, I mean, people are not shy about reaching out to, to people when they, they're heard. I mean, it's not like we don't hear them if they don't talk at the meetings, like people do hear them, but.
Yeah, okay, um, yeah, all right, gentlemen, I see your points. You know, I think what I talked to Bob, I said, well, my point is that there are actually residents that serve on these committees. So the residents of the community are having input because there are residents that are appointed on these committees. So it's not like it's a professional staff that aren't listening to what the residents want or their input because residents are serving, so, right? So they're there anyway. Um, and yeah, I guess that chair on that committee, Roy, did not proceed in the way that we would want them to proceed, right? We, we'd want them to have public participation. So, okay, I'm fine, I'm with you both. Um, and I think what we can say at town meeting is collectively, if we want, um, that we, in the spirit, we do support the spirit of this, we, we will direct committees, ones that we appoint, that you need to, uh, ensure that there is public participation. And one of the things we're looking at is can you set up inboxes for each of the committees? Which I think could be an IT nightmare, but, um.
I think it is an IT nightmare.
Well, I mean, either that, uh, I don't think anyone is particularly inclined, Adam, that serves to give out their email address. I don't think chairs that serve on committees want to do that, so. And so what ends up happening is that our, our, um, the town administrative staff get phone calls and emails and we get emails and there's got to be some approach here in which input to committees goes directly to the committee or committee chair somehow, I don't know.
Well, at one point, the Warrant Committee had an email address set up for it. I'm not sure it was ever used, but.
Yeah, perhaps not, perhaps not.
Public comment period at the Warrant Committee? I can't tell you more than once or twice anyone ever showed up. I mean, it's just.
Well, yeah, so the Structure Change Impact Group, we met dozens of times, right? And there's probably, on one hand, a handful of times, if even that, when we had more. Now it's eight AM meetings, which are tough. And then Travis started to have seven thirty AM meetings, which is even tougher for me, you've got to be kidding me. And, um, which, which clearly, you know, trying to get the work done, he did a great job as Chair. Um, there, no one really showed up.
People show up, but when there's a reason, I mean, the Warrant Committee would have nobody and then maybe once, one time in the year, you'd have twenty people in the room, so.
Yeah, okay.
And then you have stuff like, yeah, and you have stuff like the CP PC where they're getting dogged by tons of people at every meeting.
Yeah, uh, yeah, well, that's, you know, that.
And they grind the meeting to a halt and it's just.
Yeah, although we should means I've attended, Glenn, perhaps I'm wrong, I haven't attended the last few couple. Um, there aren't a lot of public folks that, there aren't a lot of folks outside of the committee members that are in attendance.
Oh, I, I just got a text from Jeff Luby saying that he actually does get emails from the Warrant Committee, email.
He does? So. Well, okay, well, that's good. Yeah, so you misspoke then, and that's good. Well, can we set up, let's say, think about for major committees that, that we would look to in an IT issue, set up an inbox that perhaps the chair has access to. I, I don't know how this is going to work. Can the chair then respond on that?
So, Mark, we've been having some of those discussions in-house. We just, we, we need to get through town meeting before we can figure out legitimately.
That's fine.
If and how this is going to work.
So I think our statement here, thank you, Patrice, I think our statement is that, look, Bob, with all due respect, we, we, the spirit of this is, we fully support, we, we just don't think we need a non-binding resolution to, to, um, to further the cause here of public participation. Well, well, I think, Roy, your idea is, is sound in terms of committee appointments and procedures that we would truly communicate to committee appointees that, you know, we encourage and, and expect them to, um, allow for public participation during meetings, so. Okay, so it sounds like unfavorable action. Does someone want to make a motion?
I move unfavorable action on Article Twelve.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh, of unfavorable action, yeah, Adam Dash.
Roy Epstein, aye.
Mark Flo, aye.
Um, I forgot, one thing, we did not vote on the main article of Three.
Yeah, that's a good point. Let's go back to that. So do I have a motion for a favorable action, Adam?
I move favorable action on Article Three, um, with the Weiss and Schreiber amendments.
Second.
All in favor?
Adam Dash, aye.
Roy Epstein, aye.
Mark Flo, aye.
And I guess if, if what happens, if the amendments don't, if you want to do another one, if the amendments fail? I don't think, I'm still in favor of it if the amendments fail.
Go ahead, just to be, just for House, because we're not going to be, it's difficult to caucus in a virtual Zoom meeting like we could at town meeting four, so if you want to do that, Adam, that's.
I move favorable action on Article Three if it's unamended.
Roy, you thinking about a second on that?
I, I just can't imagine a scenario, I guess, where the Schreiber amendment was not approved.
I can't just think the Weiss one won't be approved either, but, you know, I think, I get from Mark's point, we're not going to be able to deal with it.
You just don't, you just don't know. So, I mean, I think, I think the, the motion is, you know, I move, uh, the select board recommends favorable action on the, um, when Article Three, um, unamended, is a fine motion.
It's never going to come up because the amendments go first and then it's going to go forward.
I don't want to be caught, caught short and all of a sudden those two amendments fail and we're faced with just the original article. And then you would have a concern about that, right? Because it doesn't have the change that you expected it to.
But I wouldn't kill the whole, throw the baby out with the bathwater.
No, I think maybe, but, Roy, is that what's getting underneath it here for you? Because therefore, uh, if that doesn't have that.
Yeah, well, with the understanding that whatever vote is made here is not a binding vote at town meeting, then, uh.
Well, it's a binding vote at town meeting if the amendments.
The binding vote of ours, so we have to report it out.
No, we, yeah, so it's, we have to report it out, but the, the actual vote voted at town meeting is separate.
So you have to, you know, I mean, obviously if the amendments fail, then that will be our.
Of course, I mean, a town meeting, uh, I've never seen it, maybe I've seen it where select board, I might have seen it just a rare occasion where, uh, a member. uh, a member of the board I served with, uh, we had a certain vote one way, and then when it came to town meeting, they voted differently.
Yeah, it's happened before, but we've had caucuses on town meeting floor before. We've had to do it once virtually, and it was a little awkward, because all of town meeting had to stop, and then we took the, took the video over.
But, but whatever that discussion is, it's still just a kind of a a sense of the select board, but it's not an actual.
I don't know how we would caucus that. I mean, it's unclear to me how, as a select board, we could caucus.
I don't think we could in any practical way, and that's why I would say, I think we ought to move, move favorable on Article Three unamended, uh, uh, with the hope and understanding it's probably never going to come up, but.
You can abstain, Roy. You can abstain, Roy, if you want.
Yeah, well. Yeah, let me, I will, so I'll second the, uh, motion anyway.
All in favor?
Adam Dash, aye.
Mark, aye.
Roy Epstein, abstain.
Okay.
We'll just, there's no reason to announce it unless the unamended.
No, I will, I will not announce unless I'm asked to. Uh, I think that's it, right? Patrice, anything further here?
No, we just have a couple of items tomorrow night.
Yeah, so we won't vote in an article, tomorrow night, we'll not be voting on any of the articles at this point unless it's too late for any amendments, correct?
Unless we go to a third night.
I doubt it. I would go on to a third night at this point, but you never know.
We may be able to get to the rest, right? But isn't, did he schedule like reports on, on the ninth, or are they all the reports tomorrow night?
No, I think the reports are tomorrow night.
So therefore, all business could be conducted if we're able to get through the four articles that remain.
Yeah, I, I think we'll get through second night.
Well, that'd be great.
I'm surprised we got through Article Nine last night, but that was good.
Uh, you did a good job on that, Adam.
Thanks. A lot of, a lot of very difficult questions that I wasn't anticipating.
So tomorrow night, uh, we're going to announce the fuel tank public forum again. On the, and, uh, we do have some donations to accept. We do have a revised agenda. We have an executive session, right?
Yep.
And, uh, remember, the Chair of the School Committee will be attending that, by the way, so I just to give everyone a heads up. Um, she and I spoke about a matter that frankly, I could not comment on without, you know, my colleagues, so therefore, uh, thank you for putting that through. And then we have, um, that's it, right? Primarily. We have one, 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 one discussion, yeah. Approval of minutes, um, your vacation notice, and, and that's it. So, anyway, okay. All right. Thank you, team. Uh, late night, early morning, appreciate the efforts, really do, so. Go have a great day. If I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Adam Dash, aye.
Roy Epstein, aye.
Mark, aye. Have a good day. Thank you, Patrice.
Thanks for having me, everybody.
Thank you.
Good luck.